I'd like to call to order the January 6, 2021's Springbrough Board of Education meeting. Before we get to the roll call in accordance with board policy, the 2020 Board President, Jamie Balaje, myself will open the meeting and serve as President of the Board until a new President is elected. So with that said, item 1.2, roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Babb?
Yes.
Stukey?
Yes.
Balaje?
Yes.
Here.
Item 1.3, we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. The flag of the United States of America, to the Republic, over which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Move to item 2.1, the election of the Board President. So this time, I'd like to open the nominations for Board President.
I'd like to nominate Dan Goodtz as President.
Do I have a second?
Sure.
Any other nominations? Nominations for Board President are closed. So a roll call to elect Dan Goodtz as Board President.
Markie Anderson?
Yes.
Babb?
Yes.
Stukey?
Yes.
Balaje?
Yes.
Good?
Yes. And now we'll need to do a roll call to elect Lisa Babbs as Board Vice President.
Anderson?
Interesting.
Babb?
Yes.
Stukey?
Yes.
Balaje?
Yes.
Good?
Yes. And now we will need to do a roll call to elect Lisa Babbs as Board Vice President.
Anderson?
Interesting.
Babb?
Yes.
Stukey?
No.
Balaje?
Before I get to my vote, because I know we didn't have a chance to add comments, I just wanted to express before I vote that I think Ms. Babbs is an extremely knowledgeable member of our Board, brings a very valuable perspective to this Board, and I'm appreciative for that. But at the end of the day, I think we have fundamentally different views on our role as Board members and the role of the Board, and so for that reason, I'll be voting no in terms of assuming the leadership position at this time.
Dan Goodtz?
No. I also make a statement, because there wasn't a time for that.
Yeah, I think we, after the, yeah, we should, I think we can do it.
No.
Yes.
I was thinking that this potentially could happen, and so I wanted to have my thoughts out. So I'm going to read them. As I've served on this Board, I've been very impressed with the fact that each of us is serving because of our heart for Springbrough Schools, and the families, students, the business, the businesses that are involved, the staff, and those who make up our community. When we look at each other through the lens of understanding and assumption that each of us is doing what we believe is the right thing for our district, our differences are diminished. I know it's our differences, we have differences in opinion and create the, those are the things that create the headlines and the soundbites and that seem to make the news. But to focus on that ignores the fact that we, there's a lot of common ground that we stand on. We all want the best for Borough, and because of that, our differences actually make us stronger as a Board. Though we're each individually elected to serve an equal role on the school Board, historically we've shared in the leadership responsibilities of President and Vice President as we rotate new leadership to the Board annually. Currently, I'm the only Board who has not held a leadership position. In December of 2019, Jamie Balaje discussed Board Leadership with me and asked if I would wait one more year to be nominated for Vice President in order to provide consistency during a time of change in our district. I agreed. My experience as a parent, educator, professional volunteer, and Board Member equips me to serve in a leadership role as we continue to navigate our school during these unprecedented challenges. I'm not only speaking of the issues around the pandemic and related health concerns, but also around diversity, equity, and community representation. I bring a unique voice to the Board and its leadership as its only female member. While I know five of us do not always agree on everything, I respect my four colleagues, and I have respected each of them in these leadership roles. I've waited my turn. Once again, I am prepared to wait, but no longer silently. I am proud to nominate myself. I have no regrets for that. With this nomination of when I nominated myself, I do want it noted, my disappointment with the Board. My fellow Board Members, we have diverged on an accepted tradition of sharing leadership among the five equally elected individuals. It concerns me that I'm the only Board Member who's not held a leadership position, and I'm also the only female on the Board. I have been and will continue to represent those who elected me as I support, encourage, and challenge our Board and Administration to do what is best for kids. Regardless of the outcome of tonight and the fact that it was voted no, I'm proud to serve with this Springbrough Schools, with all four of you who were equally elected to serve. I look forward to another great year for Springbrough Schools, and I want to end with a reminder that our different perspectives, opinions, and experiences indeed make us stronger. Thank you.
Lisa Bab. Okay. Charles Anderson through the roll call has been elected Board Vice President by majority vote. Okay. Item 2.3, adoption of the agenda. Do I have a motion? So moved. Second. Okay. Roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Babb?
Yes.
Stukey?
Yes.
Balaje?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
And item 2.4, this is to establish meeting dates, times, and places for our 2021 Board Meetings, and the calendar is attached. Motion? So moved. Second. Okay.
Anderson?
Yes.
Babb?
Yes.
Stukey?
Yes.
Balaje?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Okay. Annual Standing Resolutions. Item 4.1, approval to authorize the Treasurer to request the advance of property tax revenue from the Warren and Montgomery County Auditors for all amounts available.
And you can kind of go through those.
Oh, I, okay, I'm sorry. Item 4.2 is the approval of membership renewal with the Springbrough Chamber of Commerce. Item 4.3 is the approval of our membership to the OSBA. Item 4.4 is the approval to establish a Board Service Fund for 2021 according to a higher revised code 3315.15, an amount of $20,000, and to authorize reimbursement of full expenses to Board Education members for the authorized activities upon presentation of proper receipts. 4.5, the approval to authorize the Superintendent and Treasurer to attend seminars and meetings that are beneficial to them as representatives of the school district during 2020, during 2021 within the limits of our appropriate funds. And then finally, 4.6 is to seek the approval of items 4.1 through 4.5. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion?
Anderson?
Yes.
Babb?
Yes.
Stukey?
Yes.
Balaje?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Okay. Section 6, Public Participation, Introduction of Guests. Item 6.1, Springbrough Education Association Report. We have one for today. I don't think we do. Item 6.2, our Springbrough Classified Employees Association Report. Anyone here from the classified? Okay. Item 6.3 is Pre-Arranged Public Participation. I believe we had a pre-arrange. And item 6.4 is Public Participation. Okay. Section 7, our Work Session. Item 7.1, this is the Work Session, Public Participation, where individuals can speak up to three minutes on an item on our Work Session Agenda. And first item is 7.2.
Can I ask a question about this before we move through those? So I was preparing for the meeting and reading the Work Session, Session section, and noticed that it said that they can make comments at the end of Work Session, and I know that's not how we had it, so I looked in the past, and September 23rd, and before that, it said after each Work Session item, there'll be an opportunity for public participation. There was no statement on October 21st, and November 12th, it says there will be an opportunity for public comment after the Work Session items have been presented. Why was that changed? Because to me, if somebody wants to comment, it makes sense to comment when the discuss, like at the end of the discussion, rather than waiting, it might be 30 or 45 minutes.
I'm, I'm reading, it's out there now unless I'm mistaken, it says there will be an opportunity for public comment after the Work Session items. I guess it's like that at each item, is it at the end of?
Yeah, after each item has been presented. So I don't, I don't think it should be, I think it's at the end of each one.
Yeah, that's the way I read it, is that each item. So what 7.2 goes?
And then it tells us the ask.
So there will be an opportunity after each one, because the wording changed in our Board Agenda, so I just want to make, in our Board Doc, so I just want to make sure that if they have something to share.
I feel it should be at the end of every, I think that's the intent, yeah.
I'm not sure why the wording changed, but I'm glad to hear that we're still doing that.
Okay. Okay. So 7.2, Permanent Improvement Levy Resolution, how does your vote?
Thank you, Mr. Goodtz, members of the Board. A path toward financial stability for Springbrough Schools will only happen if we are strategic phased in our approach to school funding. So spending a lot of the last five months, meeting with Tara, working with a couple of committees, your Finance Committee, as well as the Building Committees that were in place last year, we believe that we have a quality plan. The first part of this priority and phase would be to establish a permanent improvement fund. Now, a permanent improvement fund is a fund that can only be used on capital projects that have a life cycle of five years or more. Examples of PI expenditures, not all inclusive, but examples would be safety and security improvements in the buildings, buses, technology, textbooks, HVAC units, roof repairs, asphalt, parking lot repairs, building additions, et cetera. We are one of only about 130 schools out of 608 schools in the state of Ohio that does not have a PI fund. So why is it so important? Because we have six large school buildings, transportation facility, athletic facilities, roads, parking lots that require ongoing maintenance. Currently, any capital improvement project must come out of our general fund. By continuing to do this, we will continue to take valuable resources out of the classroom, which will greatly impact education. It hurts our students and staff. But here's the really great news. While we're asking the Board to place a 2 mil permanent improvement on the May 4th ballot, and the ballot language will show an increase of 2 mils of taxes, if passed on January 1st, 2022, this levy would begin to collect 2 mils. However, at the exact same time, January 1, 2022, 2 mils from the high school bond issue drops off of everybody's tax duplicate. So the net result for every homeowner in Springbrough Schools is $0 of increased taxes. This will raise about $3 million annually, that will only be used for capital improvements. The second phase, which would address additional operating needs, can now be delayed for a few years. This is a win-win for our students, our staff, our parents, community, and for every taxpayer. So later on, when we get into, we'll be asking you to approve the first part, our first step, which is the resolution of necessity, after which Tara will, in communication with the Auditor at Warren County, will have a notice to proceed, which will be presented at the January 27th Board of Education.
That's it? Thank you, Mr. Hook. Discussion?
So is 1 mil equal to 1.5 million dollars?
It's approximately that.
Approximately here.
So that's what will happen when it goes to the county auditor. He'll certify exactly how much money he believes in January of '22, because right now I use estimates. This hasn't happened yet. He'll certify that.
Okay, thank you.
I guess I just want to apologize for, obviously, for, I know we'll be voting on it later, but I appreciate the work that the Administration has put into this plan and really draw a link back to the work that our Facilities Committee undertook, I guess, a year and a half, two years ago at this point, I lost track of time. But, you know, I think that group came together and toured each of our buildings and did some really great work in terms of identifying the needs, and I think, you know, while this doesn't get us all the way there, this is certainly a step, a big step in the right direction of allowing us to address some of the needs that were identified through that work, and the fact that we're able to try and do that without having incremental increase to our taxpayers, I think is a really, really solid approach and plan, and I appreciate the creative thinking from Mr. Stacy and Mr. Hook that brought this to us today, so I'm fully supportive.
Again, I'd like to also, you know, say that I'm fully supportive as well, you know, the, what I call deferred maintenance that Mr. Hook talked through, you know, they're obviously not chandeliers or, you know, anything beyond what we need to keep buildings safe, secure, and functioning for our students and staff. We do have a lot of deferred maintenance that we've discussed since I've been on the Board, and unfortunately, you know, just due to the financial situation that we've consistently been in, we've been able to make things run as cost-effectively as possible, but there are always things that we're not able to fix, we're not able to replace, and this really would help us start to get ahead of the curve on so many of our, you know, deferred maintenance issues. And again, when you talk about windows, air conditioners, safety and security features in buildings, those are things that I think a community can uphold support, and then you throw in one of the most important things, which is ultimately, from a tax bill perspective, there's, there's no impact. You know, it's a right pocket, left pocket thing in terms of one falling off and this being added on and not having any incremental impact, so very supportive, and certainly would also like to acknowledge the, Mr. Balaje said, the amount of work that it's taken us as a Board to get here, but I'm glad we're finally, at this point, we're getting forward.
I also fully supported, definitely needed, and it was, I'm glad that we had the community input throughout this, going through and identifying, we need some help in our buildings, so this is definitely not to give us the Taj Mahal, but we got to take the steps to address the issues and keep us to the quality that we want educationally and building-wise. So I think it was a great process of having people look at the financial pieces of how would be the best way to present it to the community, and also, we had some great voices on the facility team, really digging deep into and asking great questions so that we're able to step back and say, really, what do we need as a community with this? So I fully support it, it's needed. Agreed. Other comments?
Well, I'm supportive, but I'm also cautious. Our needs are far greater than 2 mils, but for, for a number of reasons, this is a good idea. Budgetary standpoint, we've never really separated physical needs from general fund, which should be done, and so I think that's a great idea. I love the idea 2 mils will drop off, 2 mils will go on, so we'll be doing taxes. I just don't want anybody to think, this, I think it was Dan that said this is the first step. That's what it is, because we have a lot of needs for these students, and we, I just wouldn't want anybody, I just don't want anybody to think that this is the end all, it's the beginning, but it does buy us time, and so it'll be a good thing, but we're just, we're going to need more help. This, this, I'll say it again, I say it every time, this school system has always been very physically conservative, and a young lady at the end of the table watches this money like it's her own, and that's a good thing, but sometimes we need, we need to do more for these kids, that's bottom line. Anyway, so it's a good thing.
I also support it, but I understand what Charles is saying, but in this time, you know, with the pandemic and stuff, being able to give the 2 mils at no cost to the taxpayers, like Dan said, it is the first step, but it will help us get through until we need to go for a new one down the road.
Okay. Any public comments on item 7.2?
I have a question.
Yes, could you step to the, thank you.
I have a question about the levy, you said it was replacing a portion of my, that's probably all. What is that replacing? And he mentioned that, that it was.
Bond.
Hyacinth.
Hyacinth.
I know, I shouldn't have clarified, sorry.
That's a good question. Okay. Item 7.3 is the extension of the Family First Coronavirus Response Act Act. Leave.
Thank you, Jim. The FFCRA stands for the Family's First Coronavirus Response Act, and the federal government, just a little background with this, the federal government provided this protection to workers when the pandemic began. However, it was allowed to expire on December 31 of 2020. So this resolution basically extends this provision, this act, until March 31 of 2021, so three more months. And what it does is it provides up to 10 days of paid sick leave for two weeks, where an employee is unable to work because the employee is quarantined based on federal, state, or local government orders. It also provides up to 10 days or two weeks of paid sick leave, the two-thirds employee's pay rate, if they're unable to work because they have to take care of bona fide person within their, within their care, such as a child under 18. So the rationale for me is pretty simple. We met on this and discussed it, that extending this provision is simple because the pandemic is still going, still, we're still in the middle of it. So we don't want employees simply because they don't have enough sick days built up, because they're fairly new, we don't want them to have to choose whether to come to work because they're not feeling well or getting paid. That's just not right. And so I just think it's the right thing to do, I think we all do. And also, I will make this note, you know, you only can use it once, so if you've already been quarantined, you can't use it multiple times. But, so we have, you know, quite a few employees that have not had to use it, and hopefully they won't have to. But I just think it makes sense for us to extend it. By resolution, we can move it to March 31, so that's, that's what we're asking for.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hook. Discussion?
I fully support it, I 100% think that it's the right thing to do because our staff are at risk here, and so I feel like this is a way we need to take care of them. I just had a clarification question. Let's say there was a teacher whose child tested positive, can they use those 10 days first, or do they have to go to the two-thirds pay to stay home with them?
It's not them, they would get the two-thirds pay. If they're staying home solely to take care of a child, it would be the two-thirds pay.
For, for a quarantine or isolation situation, it's specific to those, those, those situations.
So if their child was quarantined three times, there's not a limit to that? What if it was 15 days that they had to stay home because of children being quarantined? Do they still get two-thirds pay?
Or 10 days, or two, two calendars.
That's two separate things, I thought, because I thought the 10 days was for them testing positive.
It's for them, you can do it either one.
Oh, so it's the 10-day limit on both of those?
I believe so, and is it, can you do it?
So there's two pathways. You've got also an emergency family medical leave that's up to 10 weeks, if you're paying pay.
Oh, that's a different, that's a little different. So I don't want to confuse with this.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion for the Board? Okay. Any public comment on item 7.3? Okay. Moving to item 7.4, the 2021 Washington DC trip. Ms. Cook?
For President and members of the Board, before you have a
But, but sometimes we need, we need to do more for these kids. That's bottom line. Anyway, so it's a good thing.
I also support it, but I understand what Charles is saying. But in this time, you know, with the pandemic and stuff, being able to give the two bills at no cost to the taxpayers, like Dan said, it is the first step. But, you know, it will help us get through until we need to go for N1 down the road.
Any public comments on item 7.2? Yes, could you step to the, thank you.
I have a question about the levy. He said it was replacing a portion of my, that's probably all. What is that replacing? And he mentioned that, that it was
Bond.
Hyacinth. Sorry, bond. I didn't know that's a term.
That's a good question. Item 7.3 is the extension of the Family First Coronavirus Response Act Act.
Thank you, Jim. The FFCRA stands for the Family's First Coronavirus Response Act. And the federal government, just a little background with this, the federal government provided this protection to workers when the pandemic began. However, it was allowed to expire on December 31 of 2020. So this resolution basically extends this provision, this act, until March 31 of 2021. So three more months. And what it does is it provides up to 10 days of paid sick leave for two weeks, where an employee is unable to work because the employee is quarantined based on federal, state, or local government orders. It also provides up to 10 days or two weeks of paid sick leave, the two-thirds employees' pay rate, if they're unable to work because they have to take care of bona fide person within their, within their care, such as a child under 18. So the rationale for me is pretty simple. We, we met on this and discussed it, that extending this provision is simple because the pande- pandemic is still going. Still, we're still in the middle of it. So we don't want employees simply because they don't have enough sick days built up, because they're fairly new. We don't want them to have to choose whether to come to work because they're not feeling well or getting paid. That's just not right. And so I just think it's the right thing to do, I think we all do. And also, I will make this note, you know, you only can use it once. So if you've already been quarantined, you can't use it multiple times. But, so we have, you know, quite a few employees that have not had to, to use it and hopefully they won't have to. But I just think it makes sense for us to extend it. By resolution, we can move it to March 31, so that's, that's what we're gonna ask for.
Thank you, Mr. Hook. Discussion?
I fully support it. I 100% think that it's the right thing to do because our staff are at risk here. And so I feel like this is a way we need to take care of them. I just had a clarification question. Let's say there was a teacher whose child tested positive. Can they use those 10 days first, or do they have to go to the two-thirds pay to stay home with them?
It's not them, they would get the two-thirds pay. If they're staying home solely to take care of a child, it would be the two-thirds pay.
For, for a quarantine or isolation situation. It's specific to those, those, those situations.
So if their child was quarantined three times, there's not a, a limit to that? What if it was 15 days that they had to stay home because of children being quarantined? Do they still get two-thirds pay?
Or 10 days, or two, two calendars.
Separate things, I thought. Because I thought the 10 days was for them testing positive.
It's for them. You can do either one.
Oh, so it's the 10-day limit on both of those?
I believe so. And is it, can you do it?
So there's two pathways.
Yeah.
You've got also an emergency family medical leave that's up to 10 weeks and two-thirds pay.
But that's different. That's a little different. So I don't wanna confuse with this.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion from the board? Public comment on item 7.3? Okay. Moving to item 7.4, the 2021 Washington DC trip. Ms. Cook?
For President and Mr. Board, according to you, you have a document that is contract for Classic Student Tours for our current seventh graders for their fall trip to Washington DC. The request is to leave on a Tuesday, very early, I'm sorry, on Monday, very early morning, and return Thursday, late evening. That particular week is a week that will allow our students to be off on Friday for rest. That is a teacher conference day on that Friday. So I don't know if you've ever had a child who's gone on the DC trip, but they come home exhausted, but it would allow them to have one extra day of rest on that trip. So they'll be leaving at 5:30 in the morning on Monday, the first, returning at 9:45 PM on November 4. Again, this is the same work company that we've used for probably a couple decades at this point. Classic Student Tours has done a great job for us in the past, and we would expect the same in the future program.
Ms. Cook, any discussion?
I do have a quick question. Are, are our current eighth graders, does it look like they're gonna be able to go? Are we just waiting on the situation in the world right now?
Well, that's a great question. And we're meeting monthly, we've been meeting monthly on our trip. They are currently slated to go May 4 through the seventh, or it's a Tuesday through Friday. A little bit different than tonight's request. We have a drop dead deadline for Classic Student Tours of March 1st to make a decision as to whether or not that trip will go. So we have been meeting monthly, and we will continue to do that. I'll be with the junior high and nurse help team at the end of January. And hopefully we will have a decision to let families know what's going to happen with that. We have discussed a couple contingency plans for those youngsters if we are unable to make that trip in May.
Would they have their money refunded if they did not go?
If they choose to not go in the future, the bulk of their money will be refunded.
Okay.
So we are working diligently to have a backup plan because we know how important that trip is for our adolescents, to make sure that they do have that experience. It may just come at a different time of year than what we're used to.
It's like a $75 investment you lost.
Any other questions? Your next door listener?
Public questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. Item 7.5, committee reports. This evening, we have two. The first is the Diversity and Inclusion Committee from Mr. Balaji and Mr. Hook. And then we have a update from the Safety Committee, Mr. Robison.
Yeah, I'll go ahead. Can we just start with Ms. Val and Mr. Hook? Kevin can sort of jump in if I, if I miss anything. But the Diversity and Inclusion Committee met, I believe it was on the 15th, 16th? 15th or 16th of December, one of those days. And really, I thought it was a really encouraging and productive discussion. Really, I started out by just setting the tone for the committee. Just, you know, some ground rules and really the purpose and what we were hoping to accomplish. We moved into a little bit of background, just about how we got to this point, going back to some things that happened sort of in the spring, and some different conversations with various different community groups and how it's all sort of come together with this, this district committee. And then we went around and we spent some time in introductions. And that's really where we spent the bulk of our time. And it was, it was, it was equal part fascinating and in some cases heartbreaking to hear sort of what drew people, their reasons to, to be interested in the committee. But we can just left incredibly energized by the commitment and passion of the individuals that were there to really help, just to really move our district forward when it comes to these areas. And so we then wrapped with, with, well, I should say, before we do that, we, we did have some updates on some of the work that is underway. Ms. Hunter, Ms. Martin's shared some of the work that's going on at the schools currently. But then we really talked about our focus going forward. And I think, you know, the group, really the focus of the back part of this academic year, the first part of the calendar year, will really be on listening to our school community and, and learning from various individuals throughout our school community. And it's really as a group, you know, just using it as an opportunity to, to learn about some of the things that are going on in our district. And then we felt that it was important to have that period of learning before we got to things like creating a purpose statement, those sorts of things. And so the plan is to meet monthly going forward, and again, it is the back part of this year, to really set that, that base so that over the summer, as we head into the next academic year, we can really, you know, really lay a strong foundation for, for what we want to accomplish as we go forward. So, Mr. Hook, Ms. Val, if there's anything else you'd like to add?
I think, as I reflected on that evening, I think the most impressive part to me was the vulnerability of the people that are on our committee, especially the students. You know, they're, we're here as a district addressing that this is an issue. And to hear from them directly and to hear their confidence and yet their hesitancy, while confident, was just so impressive to me. So it's, I think the other big thing that we definitely wanted to come across, that we wanted to put forth is, this isn't gonna be, we have a meeting and there's all these drastic changes because we, there are some systemic issues that we need to deal with. And that isn't a meet one time, decide to do this and it's done. We really want to make sure that we look at what are the issues and what are some things hearing directly from those that are impacted by it, that are, that don't look exactly like everybody else in Springboro. We want to hear from them rather than, you know, five of us white people, two white people over there, all looking and saying, okay, what diversity is it? There's some diversity on us, but there's a lot of diversity in our district that we need to be looking at. So it was just encouraging to me that how open people were. But it is gonna be a process in order for us to really address things in the right way.
I think it's just, and again, I echo everything that's been said. It was a really two-hour meeting that seemed like 15 minutes. It was just really fascinating, a lesson of people's perspectives, backgrounds, et cetera. I see this as being something that just continues to go on. I don't see an end in sight. You know, I don't think we can ever get so complacent that we've arrived at any, anything. I think as kids continue to matriculate through the school, that it's important that all of our students are valued. So very proud of, of the first meeting and just look forward to getting to know people better. And moving forward, our next meeting will be on the 20th. I believe, am I, am I right? So, that's all right.
Thank you, Mr. Hook. Okay, Safety Committee, Mr. Robison?
Yeah.
Can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you barely though, but thank you, the opportunity to give a safety meeting update. I'm sorry that I can't be there tonight. Our last meeting was on December the 8th. And our first topic of conversation was building drills, fire drills, safety drills, and tornado drills. Everything is going as planned with the fact that it's COVID right now. There really is no guidelines from the state, just make sure that you get your drills in and with your, you know, local fire and police department, just to make sure that they're fine with things, which they are. So we're in constant communication with them. Make sure that things are, are taken care of and documented. So we will continue to do that. And each building, there's no set schedule for the district as far as building-wise. Each individual building can do their own drills, just as long as we convey that to the fire and police department. We do a COVID update at every board meeting, or I'm sorry, every safety committee meeting. Our cleaning schedule is proceeding as, as normal. And we are constantly cleaning touchpoints and, you know, using the N1 cleaning products that kills COVID. We have a pretty extensive safety stock of that supplies, of those supplies. So we feel confident that we can continue this without a hiccup. The only concern is the manpower concern, just like in any district. You know, with people being out with COVID and injury, we were fully staffed. At Christmas, feeling good, and now we just lost somebody. So we continue to just cover with overtime and some work. The next topic was CARES money. We got a considerable amount of money from the township, the city, and the county. We've done everything that we possibly can think of to protect our, our staff and our students. PPE barriers, anti-rac microbial paints, new Flotex flooring, which you probably see in the media center right now, which will accept our cleaning products. And more furniture, more spacing, you know, safety lightings from when you walk from Educare parking lot down to the high school now, and aggressive, aggressive access points. So there's a lot of things that we're doing to try to, to make our buildings as safe as possible. Just safety in general and also from COVID-related items. So Legionnaires' disease, we covered that. That was a topic when we first got back into school due to the, due to water not even flowed properly through some, some districts. Our district, we actually had a plan for, we did that over the summer. We continued to do things to make sure that we didn't have any issues with that. We did get a quote to do testing in all of our buildings within our district, just under $50,000. And that would not include any remediation if something did come up. You know, right now, we're fine. We don't have any issues, have not had any issues. So we will continue to investigate any, you know, lower cost options out there as we move forward into next, next school year. And then there was a concern that was brought up, an issue with the key fob. So this district, we have a variety of key areas and non-key areas. And it seems like everybody in Springboro may have a, a key at some point. So we are trying to get the, the fobs to replace the keys to entry in the building. And, and we have successfully done that. But, but now we're trying to make sure that, you know, any coach that has a fob or a key to any area in the building, once they are done with their season, that we, in fact, get that key back and the fob back and also turned off. And I did get with athletics to make sure that that is happening. And in fact, they are, they are making a point to, to do that. And then coordinate with HR. Our next meeting is gonna be Tuesday, March the 9th. We did select five new additional members, four of the outside community members for the safety committee, and they have been notified. If there's any questions later, you'll have to convey that to me. I can't really hear, so that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Robison. Any questions from the board?
Community members are able to attend? Those are open meetings, even if they're not, they weren't selected, correct?
I believe that's... Mr. Robison, that's a open meeting, the Safety Committee meeting?
Yes.
Yes, yes, yes.
How would they get, would they just go to the website to see the dates? Or if they needed to join via Zoom? Are you doing Zoom for each of these throughout the pandemic?
Mr. Hook?
Is that, are you doing Zoom during the pandemic and all?
Yeah, so we did Zoom on the 8th, and we will continue to do in-person if possible and Zoom. And that is posted out on the website, Scott posted all that stuff.
Do they post the Zoom link if somebody wants to Zoom in?
Zoom link posted. Is Zoom link posted?
It has not been posted, no. It has not gotten posted. It can be, but it has not gotten.
What are the steps if somebody wanted to attend via Zoom?
We, we can post that, right?
Yeah, if you provide the link, I can get it posted and have it up there publicly, sure.
Thank you.
Make sure it's posted. Good enough.
Okay. Public comments on 7.5, two committee reports. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Robison. Item 7.6, discussion of other business as required.
I do have one thing.
Oh, yes.
Excuse me. As you're aware, last week, Governor Dewine released new quarantine procedures for all Ohio K-12 schools. So after gathering data and consulting with health, health experts, they have determined that students and staff do not have to quarantine as long as they have continued to wear a face mask in a classroom setting. This will also include, as of this afternoon, in a text message from the commissioner of the Health Department, this will also include riding the bus as long as the face masks are there. Obviously, what it excludes is lunch, which you're taking your mask off to eat. So then distancing is important. Extracurriculars, athletics, they have their own standards that will remain in place. Now, this, this is gonna be a game changer for us. I mean, it allows our kids to stay in school as we strive to keep them open. And this change will go into effect Monday, January 11th for Springboro schools. We will have a link later in the week, have another meeting with the Health Department and the other superintendents from Warren County to verify, to make sure everything is in place. Those schools that have opened are also implementing as well. And so those things will be on our website along with the link to his actual order. So I just want to say that we remain very dedicated to the health of all of our students and staff. And this implement, and this change in this protocol, we'll still continue to practice distancing wherever we can until this thing is behind us. And so we'll continue to work with our Health Department. And we just want to thank our parents and our staff and our students for all of their efforts to date, and their cooperations, and their patience as we continue to navigate a, probably the most challenging year in any kind of recent history.
Thank you, Mr. Hook. Any questions or comments from the board?
I do have two questions. Will we be notifying parents if their child was exposed to somebody, even if they had the mask on and they don't have to quarantine so that they know that there was that exposure?
We'll still notify, yes. We'll want, we'll want parents to just watch their kids still. The gold standard is still, you know, watch your kids for those 14, 14, 10 to 14 days. So yes, we'll still have those.
Okay, good, good.
They just don't require the quarantine.
Will we be watching videos from the bus just because of the, it's easier in the classroom to make sure the students have masks on, but in the bus, clearly that's not as easy when they're in the back? So is that how we'll know whether they don't have to be quarantined?
Well, right now, they're required to wear them, so, but yes, we can, we can also look at that video. So if we have any, any doubt, we'll, we'll double check.
I would say any bus is a doubt.
Maybe.
Wanting to stop, I think it needs to be, yeah, thank you.
And we'll put something, we'll put out the more official information at the end of the week and then on the weekend as well.
Is, you mentioned your meeting with the other superintendents in Warren County. Is this gonna be consistent across the county?
Yes. So as you can imagine, it happened last week on Wednesday. So everybody's been scrambling since then, trying to make sure we understood what, what he said in his press conference, then we're seeing in, in actual written orders. It took, everything is a little bit behind. So we're finally getting that stuff, so push that along.
Any public comment on item, what amounts to item 7.5? Yeah. Thank you.
Heather Bauer, 9248, 228. I'm just curious, are we still able to quarantine our children if they are exposed? And do they all, do they remote during, during those weeks?
If you choose to, that's what you choose.
That's still an option. And then my other question is, for those families that might have decided to come back to school without knowing this in advance, can they still opt to do remote at this point in time?
Can they opt to go remote?
To keep remote? Like if they decided that they were coming back and then this happened during the break? Maybe that's a pretty big thing for some people, so I'm just curious.
I think that we're probably able to, to accommodate easier at the secondary level versus the elementary. We haven't had any issues really in elementary. Our biggest issues have been in the secondary because of just the socialization that's involved with them.
I know masks are required, but I also know a lot of kids don't wear them properly. And teachers can't always tell the kids what a mask is. So I just know... So I just know without, we're not able to distance like we should, we'd like to.
Mm-hmm.
And so I just hope the masks are still available.
We can, we can consider anybody on an individual basis with, with doctors.
With any doctors.
Notes as well, but the absence, the change, mask changes with especially the elementary schedule would really be, yeah, we would really have a struggle, struggle being able to balance those.
But it is a policy change, so I think.
I'm sorry?
I doubt there's that many people, but it is a policy change, so I hope that if there were a lot of people, you'd be able to.
But it's always open to listen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that was, uh, section seven, section eight. Stacy?
Item eight point one is the approval of the tax budget, that's one on the, on the, I don't know, there. Item eight point two, approval of December, so you have attached on more docs, the financial reports for December twenty twenty. In December, we received just under one point four million dollars in revenue. Ninety-three percent of that revenue was due to state funding. So again, I have said previously that these are our times where we're not receiving tax advances, so we get very little revenue in. Tax advances for the second half will start sometime in mid-February, so January will look similar in terms of revenue as December. We've had about four point seven million, however, in expenses in December, which is typical for this time of year. We had fall supplementals, we had the first insurance increase for January, those previous are in December, so we had slightly increased expenditures due to those needs. It takes about a hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars a day for our district to operate and when we closed in the month of December, we had just over sixty-three days of operating cash on hand, which was about a nine point nine million dollar fund balance. So those are the financials, and they're mostly grabbed on more docs. And then I have item eight point three, which will be approval of a donation of a thousand dollars from the GIBI carryout to be used towards the athletic program and then we'll move to those first five items.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Stacy. Uh, item eight point four is the approval of items eight point one through eight point three. Do I have a motion?
Somebody's.
Second.
Second.
Family discussion.
Anderson?
Yes.
Bath?
Yes.
Stewie?
Yes.
Palage?
Yes.
Yes.
And then we can move to the rest of these. Approval of a donation of a hundred and fifty dollars from Skyline Chilly to be used towards the Jeroxy program. Approval of a donation of fifteen dollars from Ronald and Cherry Malone for the student yield balance account, which now has eleven hundred and five dollars in it. Approval of a donation of new books valued at a hundred and thirty dollars from Sean and Soft to be used at Dennis Elementary. Item eight point eight, approval of a donation of a hundred dollars from the anonymous donor to be used at Five Point Elementary. Eight point nine, approval of a donation of indoor recettes for Dennis Elementary, now we have seventy-nine dollars and one cent. Those donors are listed on the lower, lower side number. Then item eight point ten, approval of a donation of four hundred and fifty dollars to the Harris and South Family Scholarship Fund and the donors are also listed on the bottom.
Thank you, Ms. Stacy. Eight point eleven is approval of items eight point five through eight point ten. Do I have a question? Second. Discussion or comment?
Can you just remind me what the Harris and South Family Scholarship Fund is?
That's for a person and I think Andrew, Andrew will be a little better explaining this, but we have a person that used to be on the board, I believe, and then they passed away and we used to have a scholarship fund out there. That scholarship fund, it ended years ago and then now another person has passed on their family and they would like to restart that scholarship fund.
So who qualifies? Like how do we advertise? Is this like an aviance that all seniors can apply every year or?
We haven't established how that's going to look yet. The family is going to reach out and when we get through the holidays, they're going to reach out and kind of work through the logistics of how to, we said that it'll work through the high school counselors, that's also by twenty-five.
Okay. Thank you.
Will call, Anderson?
Yes.
Bath?
Yes.
Stewie?
Yes.
Palage?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, Assistant Superintendent of Administrative Operations.
Good evening, members of the board. Mr. President, welcome. I present to you item nine point one, which is our personnel report for January. And I am pleased to ask the board to approve the administrative contract for Jill Moody, item nine point two and nine point three. It was my gift to take a woman out of my COVID world and sit with Jill and get to know her and she is the right fit for Springboro and we need her. Her depth of knowledge is amazing, she's a lifelong learner and she's the real deal. And so she will round out our speculant team. And so we are asking for your approval for her nine point two contract to take us through the end of the year and then her two-year contract, nine point three. And then, did you want to say anything, Emily, or?
You, you did a great job because you have Jill as part of our team and it would be a great addition to our team.
It's going to be a great hallway.
It will.
And nine point four is the resolution to continue the FFCRA through May thirty-first, March thirty-first.
Item nine point five is approval of items nine point one through nine point four for the board. Second.
Second.
Any discussion?
I just want to welcome Jill Moody. I am thrilled that that is who you guys selected. When I used to supervise student teachers, I had a student teacher in her room, so I saw firsthand what an amazing teacher she is and just having those connections within our buildings is amazing. So, congratulations to you and great job hiring her. She's going to be an awesome, awesome asset to the FFC.
Anderson?
Yes.
Bath?
Yes.
Stewie?
Yes.
Palage?
Yes.
Good?
Yes. Okay, section ten, board member reports, comments, questions, announcements and future considerations. We do have one item before our announcement, it's item ten point one. This is the resolution declaring the necessity of levying an additional tax in excess of the ten mil limitation and requesting the county auditor to certify matters in connection therewith. Do I have a motion? Second? Further discussion is? Okay, we'll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Bath?
Yes.
Stewie?
Yes.
Palage?
Yes.
Good?
Yes. Item ten point two is announcements and future considerations and actually before we can do that, eleven point one, are we canceling?
No, we still have it.
We are still, okay, I apologize. Okay, item ten point two is announcements and future considerations and after that we'll move to executive session. Okay, now we'll start with this.
I want to start off with just giving a shout out to our maintenance department here at the high school. We were doing some things over Christmas and the selflessness that they show in just jumping in and doing absolutely anything that is needed was absolutely amazing. And I just think those are the people that we don't see because they're just, they're doing all of this stuff and to have experienced it firsthand was amazing. They were a great team and we're very fortunate to have that team here. Another is, and I saw some of this on social media this week, I think parents appreciate at a whole new level what our teachers do and it is just that it's so positive of what the teachers are doing to connect with the kids and it's miserable for many parents, but it's not because of what the teachers are doing, it's just because it's, it's a difficult situation and it's been neat to see so much positivity around how they are keeping, you know, twenty-five little kindergarten faces on the screen and trying to engage them and the funny things that are happening. So, just kudos out to our staff that is doing this difficult thing of remote, your entire class and then those that are having to do it on a consistent basis with teaching our remote learners and our in-class learners. So, that was encouraging to me. The last thing is just with everything that's happened today, I just want to encourage us as a community to show respect to each other. It's heartbreaking what's happening right now and though we're a school district, we are a community and I just would hope that we show each other much more respect than what is happening right now. That's it, thank you.
Mr. Anderson?
Welcome and congratulations Jill. Thank you. For my development, but the fact that these folks thought enough of you to hire you is good enough, really. Glad to have you and that's a good point. Just, just a little act of kindness. It's unfortunate, but we've come so far. Doesn't seem like anybody has any grace in their life. So hopefully we get through this virus and, and once again, I can't say enough to the administrators to what you're doing every day. It's amazing and I know a lot of other businesses, especially, especially mine, it's, you know... Board, that's it.
I want to congratulate Jill and thanks for all the donations that people continue to give us every little bit of, that's for sure.
Yep, yeah, thank you for the donations. Two things, you know, as the entire district virtual right now again, big thank you to everyone in the district. I mean, I happen to sit down and kind of spy on my son just to make sure he's on task and got some of the lessons virtually and it's, it's just very impressive. I mean, at this point, very polished. I, I mean, kudos to his teachers and the technology behind it and the curriculum. I mean, it's just very impressive to watch firsthand as somebody that's not in education, without an education background, it's again, very, very hurting to see and, you know, humbling that, um, what everyone's doing, so thank you. And then, you know, kind of to echo what Ms. Bath said, maintenance, I've got two kids in sports and now that we've transitioned to basketball this year and everything's indoors, again, really impressive with how we're able to conduct that safely and, you know, have it set up in a way that allows the kids to, to go out and still participate in extracurriculars because I think, you know, I think we, we agree as a board that's so, so important to get that, that interaction when possible. And again, it's just really impressive to see everyone doing that. So again, thank you. I know that it's, I'm sure it's a lot of extra time versus what it would typically be, but, you know, from the bottom of this parent's heart, thank you, so. That's it.
Yeah, nothing new, it hasn't already been covered, but to a extent, like congratulations to the superintendent in this capacity. Well deserved and yeah, I just would echo what everyone else has said just regards to, we've been saying it from the beginning of this year and back into the summer, just extending my thanks for all of the work that's gone into, you know, getting us to this point. It's, I believe we're halfway through the academic year. Certainly nothing without its, its bumps and challenges along the way, but just appreciate everybody's efforts to, to just really make this a positive experience for our students. So thank you to our, our staff, our teachers, our administrators, everything that's at hand in getting us to this point, that's greatly appreciated.
Sure, Ms. Stacy? Okay, thank you. We'll move to item eleven point one, executive session. This is to consider the employment or compensation of an public employee or official. There will be no action after executive session. Again, to carry on a District Palage tradition, to discuss an executive session, please keep an executive session. So I need a motion, eleven point one. Second?
Second.
Anderson?
Yes.
Bath?
Yes.
Stewie?
Yes.
Palage?
Yes.
Yes.